I call the meeting of City Council to order and ask everyone to be sure to put your cell phones on mute or turn them off, please. We'll begin our meeting by having the invocation offered by Mrs. Hillier.
Let us pray. Most holy and wise God, as again that we come, and we thank you for this beautiful day and the time that you have given us to set aside for the city business. And Father God, as we attempt to go about our duties of the city, lead us and guide us, dear God, be with us. We ask that your Holy Spirit direct us in all the decisions that we make, and may it be for the benefit of the people, dear God. Bless all the people, the employees, the staff, dear God, and give you the praise in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a public which stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we continue with our tar agenda, it is our pleasure to have in our midst this evening Delegate-elect Rick Morris from the 76th 64th District, and we welcome him as our newly-elected Delegate to the House of Delegates. And Rick, we'd invite you to make a comment.
Hey, just wanted to come to the City Council meeting. I'm Rick Morris, being the Delegate for the 64th District. Just wanted to introduce myself to the City Council and let them know that I'm here to help in the way I can and just looking forward to getting work through this election.
The next item on our agenda is amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda to be offered?
Mr. Mayor?
Ma'am?
I'd like to request that the Council amend the agenda so that when we get to the section on financial matters, we can add an amendment which will be presented by the Director of Finance. It's a budget amendment for the schools.
Add a budget amendment?
Yes.
All right. Any other amendments, additions, amendments to the agenda? May I have a motion to adopt this amendment?
So moved.
Motion is our second. All in favor say aye.
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 An aye. Motion carries. Thank you. That'll be b. Okay. The next item on our agenda are minutes of the previous meeting of October the 17th, November the 3rd, the 14th, and the 16th meetings. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
On page two, the first part of Citizens' Time, I think it should read "For the Franklin Sports Center, if the women of the world," not "is."
Yes.
Third line up from the bottom should be "if" instead of "is."
I'm looking for two. I've got lots of ones. I haven't got any two. There it is.
Regular meeting.
Third line from the bottom? Yeah.
Instead of "is."
If the women of the world request.
Regular meeting, November 14.
Yes. Okay. Any other corrections to any of the minutes? May I have a motion to adopt the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Motion is our second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 An aye. Motion carries. Next item is Citizens' Time, and we have one person who's signed up to Citizens' Time. Mr. Drury, do you still wish to speak?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. Please come forward.
Uh, Mayor, City Council, my name's Alan Drury of the 719 West Second Avenue here in Franklin, and I just received a copy of this ordinance that was passed by the City Council as far as how you go about charging for wastewater. It's been my understanding that it's always been based on the meter reading, and if it's based on the meter reading, the 1691 that's being charged a flat fee to my tenants, I don't, I still don't understand the rightfulness of that. I can't see how it's legal. I mean, you're getting more money, and there's no more water going through that meter, whether it's serving one house, or two houses, or five houses. It's all the same. The meter reads what it reads, and it's a lot more question is whether the water that's going through that meter is actually less going into the sewer because people cook with it, they wash their cars with it, they water their lawns with it. If you have animals, they drink the water. So more water's actually being read by that meter than is actually going back into the sewer. I can guarantee you that. I know that for a fact. And for anyone to charge me 1691 extra fee, I just, I just think it's illegal. If I owned a public, if I had a works of mine and were charging these rates, I don't think I could pay. I couldn't, I couldn't do that. They'd be taking me to court. And then there's a moral issue that comes up, and that's something that's looking at in an addendum. If you're gonna have a moral issue, where does that start to begin with just a, one councilperson doing something wrong, or entire council making the wrong choice on a moral ground? If I'm being charged by my meter, charge me by my meter. But don't, don't charge me by my meter and then turn around and say, well, we're gonna put a flat charge on you because it's more than one unit being served. And it says whether it's one or two. It's not just one meter. If I have two meters, I'm still gonna have the same charge. So there's no change I can make. I can't make any changes at all.
Okay.
And I think that this needs to be changed because everybody should be changing the charge the same. Use it as the meter. Whatever the meter reads, charge it accordingly for the sewer. I appreciate your time and thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which includes, only item is the Independence Day, Center Day. May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented? Contains a proclamation.
So moved.
Motion is our second. All in favor say aye.
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 An aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Under Financial Matters, the October Financial Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Other members of Council, to the City Manager and City Attorney, and those assembled, good evening. Before you, you have the October 31st, 2011 Financial Report. You have any questions at this time, I'd be able to entertain those. I do want to add that at your September meeting, you asked us to go back and adjust the report to reflect the accruals that were showing under the 2010 numbers, and we were able to do that. So you do have a financial report before you that looks a little bit more apples-to-apples comparison for the same period last year.
So we left the current year is still on accrual, but what you did was you changed the last one cashed accrual?
Yes.
Is that an appropriate way to do that? I understand you have auditors in here.
Excuse me?
I understand you have auditors on board finishing up the audit.
Oh, oh, yes, absolutely. We're finishing up. We're working on the draft report.
They'll be checking all of this stuff as well. Are there any specific questions anyone has about the report presented? May I have a motion to adopt the report as presented?
Financial report.
On the Financial Report.
On the only adopted budget amendment. Except for the.
Only adopted budget amendment.
Okay. Next is the, for the budget amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
This is a budget amendment for the school division. Basically, the amendment is to amend the school operating budget by reducing it by $4,998. This reflects less awards than was, than was in the current fiscal year 2011, 2012 budget, and the school cafeteria fund will actually receive an increase of $5,763. So the amendment before you is to reduce the school operating fund by $4,998 and to increase the school cafeteria fund by $5,763.
Okay. We'll go back and approve them after it's gone through the mall.
Those are the only two.
That's it?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
The rest is just explanation of the.
Yes, the rest is just supporting documentation.
Move for adoption of budget amendment 2012-11.
Motion is our second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 An aye. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the proposed amendment to the Franklin City Charter. The public hearing will now occur as advertised. The notice for this public hearing has been properly documented and served in the paper. There are four proposals that have been presented and researched and moved forward to the public hearing. I'll now open the public hearing to the public for comments.
Do you want to do an overview? Is it?
I'll be happy to give Council and the public an overview if you'd like me to.
And you may.
Okay.
I thought it was fair and well.
We have four proposals, which I have tried to summarize in a memo that's dated November the 9th, 2011, which was actually in the agenda package on November the 14th, and is in your agenda package again tonight so that you are looking at the information for the second time. The four proposals, the first proposal is a recall provision. From my research, I find nothing that prohibits Council from including a recall provision in its city charter. I have found that the proposal that has been offered by some members of the community is very much like four other cities. In my research, I found four with the very similar proposal. In addition to the four cities with similar provisions, I also found eight other cities that have a recall provision but is slightly different. The difference that I found basically in the recall provision that is being submitted for consideration is a recall that is based upon the participation of the electorate, whereas the other eight cities that had a recall provision, their recall provision was exercised more by the council than it was by the electorate. So the big difference between the two is one is driven by the citizens and the other is driven by the council. This particular provision would be driven by the citizens. Would like to discuss the mechanics of the recall for you. It begins with a petition. Petition has to be prepared and signed like if you were running for public office. It's very similar to that kind of petition. It has to be signed by 15% of the electorate. When I speak of this, I guess for simplification, this proposal covers a recall provision for a ward member and covers a recall provision for the mayor. I'm just gonna refer to it as a council recall because the provisions are pretty much the same. The one difference is when you're doing a recall provision for a council member, someone representing a ward, you only need 15% of the electorate that voted in the last gubernatorial election. For the mayor's position, it has to be 15% from the city. So that's the only difference. And when I say 15%, it does not make any difference whether the person that signs a petition actually voted in the previous election. It just has to be signed by 15% of those people that are citizens and eligible to Once you have a petition that's signed by 15% of the people eligible to vote, that petition is then presented to the Circuit Court. The Circuit Court can then enter an order calling for a hearing. The purpose of the hearing is for the petitioner to come forward, present the petition to the court, make sure that the court finds that it is sufficient, and answers any questions that might be asked. Once that has occurred, if the court finds the petition to be sufficient, then the court can enter a order. Once that order is entered, that sets a date for an election. The council person that might be the subject of the recall provision has an option to go ahead and resign. If that person chooses not to resign, the election is set for no sooner than 30 days and no more than 40 days. Parties that are interested can go ahead and file petitions to run as a candidate to be the successor to the council person that's the subject of the recall. The ballot is very simple. The ballot says, should the council person be removed? There's a box for yes and a box for no. You mark the box either way, and then underneath of that box, you have all the people that have signed up or filed petitions to run for the office if the recall actually turns out to be a majority. You count the votes. If the majority votes for removal, then the candidate is removed, and the person with the most votes becomes the successor and fills out the rest of that council person's term of office. So that's the mechanics of how the recall provision would work. The next provision is what I refer to as the forfeiture provision. I would like to point out, right now, we have one forfeiture provision in our city charter. You should have a copy of the charter with you. If you look at Charter Provision 3.09, you will see that subsection A provides a charter, excuse me, provides a forfeiture provision if you have been convicted of a felony while you're in office. Would like to touch on a few state provisions that deal with forfeiture. The Charter Provision that I refer to is also the subject of a state code, Virginia Code Section 24.2-231. That's in the elections part of the Virginia Code, and that actually codifies the Charter Provision we have, which says that if you're convicted of a felony, then you forfeit your office. Code Section 24.2-233 is a removal provision provided in the state statute. A person can be removed from office on a petition filed with the court for neglect of duty, malfeasance, or misfeasance in office, for conviction involving controlled substances or marijuana, or for a conviction of a hate crime. Any of those subject matters, whether they're in our charter or not, someone can go forward and file a petition with the court and seek to have a council person's office forfeited for a conviction of these types of things. The last I want to touch on is Virginia Code Section 15.2-1400D, which says that the governing body can punish or fine a member of the governing body for disorderly conduct. What I find unfortunate about this code provision is there is no definition of what is disorderly conduct. So because there is no definition, there's no case law, as far as I can determine, there are no Attorney General decisions on the matter. We really don't know what constitutes disorderly conduct. By the same token, there is no guideline, I would submit to you. It is up, left up to the locality to decide what is the punishment or the fine if the governing body decides to try to hold somebody for some disorderly conduct. Now, on our actual provisions that have been submitted for forfeiture, they are four clearly-defined, what I'll call offenses. The first is a violation of any provision of the city charter. That could be caused, that could be the subject of a forfeiture. If the person no longer resides in the ward for which he is representing, that could cause a forfeiture. Conviction of a crime involving moral perpetuity. And moral perpetuity is generally considered lying, cheating, or stealing. That could be the subject of a forfeiture provision. And failure to pay your real estate taxes or your personal property taxes, that could be a forfeiture provision. Yes, ma'am?
Question. Could you enumerate what violations of the city charter there are that council can violate? Can you enumerate them?
Well, the only, the only forfeiture provision that would presently have one that calls for forfeiture of your office is if you are convicted of a felony.
I understand that, but under the new, it says, number one is violating any provision of the city charter.
That's adjusted language. I have not tried to improve upon the language.
Okay. Can you sit here and enumerate those violations? What those violations might be specifically?
I think it would be any provision of the charter that says you can't do something and you did that, for instance. All right, let's do this. At present, if you look at Charter Provision 3.09B, which deals with the relationship between the city manager and council and how to handle staff, this particular provision will come up later on in the discussion, but as it exists right now, the charter says that a member of city council cannot involve itself in administrative services of the city. The member of council must deal with administrative services strictly through the city manager. In other words, if you've got to complain about a department or what somebody's doing, you have to go talk to the city manager. You can't go to the department head. You can't go to an employee. The other part of that particular section says that a member of city council cannot order an employee, that's the subordinate of the city manager, cannot order that person to do anything. So for instance, if you had a pile of trash that you wanted picked up by Public Works, you couldn't call Public Works up and tell them to bring a truck by and pick up the pile of trash. There is no penalty for either of those two provisions in existence right now. You have a prohibition, but you don't have a penalty. So this number one, violation of a provision of the city charter, using my example, if you called Public Works up and said, send a truck by, I wanted to pick up this trash in my yard, you would be giving an order to a subordinate of the city manager. That would be in violation of the city charter. That could cause you a forfeiture.
Okay. I had a concern, a citizen called and asked specifically, what did that mean? And they were concerned that that part of it, they supported all of the others, but that part of it was not specific enough, not needy enough. That was the concern that that person raised. The rest of the calls I've had were, of course, positive for all of the others, but for me, in voting capacity, I would want to be able to enumerate those violations. That's.
We're getting into discussion phase of it.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Okay.
Is there any way to be more clear on that, or is it just needs to be of a general nature?
It's of a general nature at this point. Certainly, you could make it more specific. I think in making it more specific, you run the risk of leaving something out. If you leave it with the current language, then you run the risk of having it overly broad. It seems to me that your options are to accept it as it is right now, or you could eliminate it. If you decide to vote on these proposals tonight, you could eliminate number one and just deal with two, three, and four as far as making a determination to the General Assembly. There's, it's nothing that says you have to go forward with number one tonight. There's no way in the world I could enumerate everything.
All right. So I think I had been over all four of the suggested provisions that would result in a forfeiture. Any questions on any of these others?
The process would be at a public council meeting. The offending ward representative would be told what he or she had done in terms of a violation. The ward member would have an opportunity to, I guess you would say, defend himself or present his side of the case. There would be an opportunity to resign. If the council member refused to resign, then it would be a decision for the council to decide whether or not they want to proceed with the forfeiture, and if they do, they would put it to a vote, and if the person, if the majority agrees that a person had violated one of these four rules, then there would be a dismissal, and council would proceed to fill the vacancy created on the council. Okay. The next, the third proposal, I had a short title of communication with staff. This deals with Charter Section 3.09. The, as I indicated earlier, 3.09B has, well, let's back it up. Let me try it this way. The proposal has four parts to it. One, two, three, and four. Parts two and three are already incorporated into our charter. So this proposal really is an expansion of two parts, part number one and part number four. Two and three, which we already have, which I've talked about briefly, deal with the administrative services and the prohibition on giving orders to a subordinate of the city manager. Part one adds to the list and says that a council member cannot interfere with the appointment or dismissal of an employee. Part number four imposes a penalty. If you recall earlier, I said there was no penalty for two and three. Part number four adds a penalty, makes it a class three misdemeanor to violate one, two, or three, and also calls for a forfeiture of the office. Any questions on that? It's an expansion of an existing prohibition.
Excuse me, Mr. Williams. Could you, and you may go over it again in the future, I don't know, but could you read that provision in the charter in reference to the part that says that the only thing that council may do in regards to the city manager or employees or anyone working for the staff is to make inquiry? Could you read it as the charter currently states?
At present, the city charter says, 3.09B, except for the purpose of inquiry, the council and its members shall, so long as the city manager form of government obtains, deal with the administrative service solely through the city manager, and neither the council nor any member thereof shall have authority to give orders to any of the subordinates of the city manager, either publicly or privately. That's the existing prohibition.
I do believe, and I don't have it in front of me, that the term or phrase inquiry is used another time in our current charter in reference to being able to ask questions, inquiry, of any person, as long as it is just asking questions. inquiry, of any person, as long as it is just asking questions. I have no dispute that there is no provision currently in our charter that allows us to give instructions, or as you put it, orders, to an employee. But I do believe there is another provision that says we have the right to ask questions, which is restated in the newly proposed provision. And to help ref, give you a reference of where I'm talking about, I think it's the part, because what you just read didn't include the subpoena power. So, I believe it's in the part that mentions subpoena power.
3.08A is where it's located, what you're talking about.
Is the inquiry in that portion?
To have full power to inquire into the official conduct of any office or officer under its control and to investigate the accounts, receipts, dispersments, that language?
Yes, that language.
Okay. So, that's where it is, 3.08.
Does it mention employees?
A, no.
Under its control.
And council's control would be the city manager and the city attorney. All right, and on to the last provision. For lawyers, this stuff is exciting. For you folks, I know it's boring. The last provision is council, what I have termed the council running for mayor. As it presently exists, council members have four-year terms and the city mayor has to stand for reelection every two years. And so, this proposal suggests that if you are sitting on council, representing a ward, and it's your desire to run for the office of mayor, right now, we have no prohibition on a council member running for the office of mayor and retaining his or her council seat. So, by way of example, it's easy to explain it by example. If a council member runs for mayor, wins the election, then obviously, he or she becomes the mayor and must resign the ward seat, which means that council will then have the responsibility to appoint someone as his successor. On the other hand, if the council member runs against incumbent for mayor and loses the election, as it presently stands, the council member would continue to serve in his or her capacity as a ward representative. The new proposal suggests that if you are a sitting council member and you want to run for office as mayor, once you have filed your petition to seek the office of mayor, you must also resign your seat from city council effective June 30. Now, the election would occur in May, and so, that would allow the council member to continue to serve as the ward representative until June 30. Obviously, if the council member wins the election, he's going to resign the ward position anyway, because he will be taking office as mayor. On the other hand, if the council member loses the election, because of the resignation, that would mean as of June 30, the council member would have resigned his or her office, would not be the mayor, would not be a ward representative, and then it would be up to council to appoint someone to succeed the council member that resigned. This provision currently exists in four other city charters, Norfolk, Portsmouth, Suffolk, and Virginia Beach. And so, that's that proposed amendment.
Those are the four amendments that have been presented and looked at from a legal standpoint, have been presented to council for consideration this evening and are the subject of our public hearing. Having heard the staff's presentation, I'll now declare the public hearing open for comment by any members of the community who would like to speak to this issue, reminding you that you are considering only these four, so your comments need to be guided toward those four amendments only. Please come forward, state your name and your address and your remarks.
Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor Johnson, members of council this morning, and Mr. Williams. I'm Jim Rainey. My address is 321 Meadow Lane. I come to speak in support of the charter changes and the substance of this public hearing. There's been some discussion in prior council meetings as to who drafted these. I drafted them. I had the assistance of a small group who, like me, have concerns for Franklin. Included in the group are attorneys and retired IP executives, among others. In addition to this small group, others have reviewed the changes at my request and have supported them. Anonymity was not requested by me, however, it was appreciated in that the focus should be on the charter changes, not on the individuals presenting them. The requests for the charter changes are not presented with any political agenda. In fact, the idea for changing the charter and the manner in which we're proposing with the four amendments did not originate with me, nor did it originate with the group that considered them. The changes came about as a result of individuals approaching me for legal assistance that were inquiring as to the procedure for recall in Franklin. They were very knowledgeable of Mayor Holly being recalled by the citizens of Portsmouth, and they assumed that there was a similar provision that could be followed in Franklin. I quickly advised, after a little bit of research, I quickly, I advised them that they really had no recourse in Franklin. Portsmouth's charter allows for recall. Franklin's charter does not have a recall provision. The state recall statute, Mr. Williams referred to it moments ago, 24.2-233, is really not a recall statute. Well, it's labeled that, but it's a court proceeding. It's not putting the control of the recall in the hands of the electorate. The idea for change continued in my mind after I told the people that I could not help them. The lack of recourse for recalling a council person or a mayor gave me concern. Question very simply put is why does the electorate not have the ability to take someone out of office that they put into office? I took my concerns to my friends, and I think it's appropriate at this point to make sure that everybody understands we have no political agenda, we have no vendetta against anyone. We simply perceive that our charter needs to be changed in the manner presented. The changes are not directed to any one of you individually. All the charter changes presented tonight have been put forward in the interest, in our opinion, of good government. My friends and I began reviewing charters across Virginia. We began the process late spring, early summer. What we found was that a recall provision is not unique. What we are presenting is not new. You will find the same or similar language in other charters. The particular recall provision before you tonight is effectively Portsmouth recall provision, but adapted for a city with wards. Portsmouth does not have wards. Likewise, the proposed change for resigning your council position if you want to run for mayor, again, is not new. I respectfully agree to disagree with my across-the-street neighbor and friend, Steve Stewart, publisher of the TN, who opined to the contrary on this issue. This identical or similar charter provision is found in all of the cities to the east of us, Norfolk, Suffolk, Portsmouth, Virginia Beach. It's normally referred to as the resign-to-run legislation. It's prevalent across our country. Five states have it as state legislation, going from dog catcher to governor. If you want to run for a higher office, you resign. The charter change for forfeiture of office for certain offenses is not new, as Mr. Williams has pointed out. The forfeiture language already is in our city charter. What we have done is expanded the offenses for which one could lose his office. The non-interference proposal simply puts teeth in what should be understood by anyone serving on council that's involved in a council, city manager, form of government. Our proposed change, changes have been reviewed by your city attorney. They've been put in resolution form by him. He has given you a memorandum to you, and it is well-written and informative. He's done an excellent job of reviewing and analyzing the proposed changes, and I hope you will read thoroughly his memorandum and understand what he is presenting to you about these charter changes. We urge you to vote affirmatively on each resolution or the resolutions as a group. Again, we have no underlying political agenda in presenting these charter changes to you. They're not presented as a reaction to someone else's proposed changes. Remember that when we presented these to you originally, there were no other political charter changes on the horizon. We do not take lightly the amendment of our charter. It's been amended 10 times since its inception in 1961. We think that the only time that it should be amended is when there is added value to the document. We believe that the proposed amendments add value. Very simplistically, the proposed changes assure that the electorate, the people that take the time to vote, that have the concerns for the future of Franklin, have the ultimate control over their representatives. They also assure that the council persons conduct themselves within the parameters approved by the electorate, and again, in a manner the office deserves. It's not a reinvention of the wheel. Each change can be found in other charters. They have been received and supported by a cross-section of Franklin. There are various people that are here tonight that are in support of this. Without attempting to limit the, anyone on this, I'm simply going to ask those that are in support of the charter amendments being approved that are submitted to stand.
Thank you.
Excuse me, can we ask any questions?
Mr. McMoRan?
Yes, I had asked, could we ask Mr. Rainey any questions?
Yes, she may.
Uh, Mr. Rainey, could you share with us the 10 amendments that have been made to our charter previously?
I want to correct that your city attorney there on the city charter that he gave you in your last, uh, what, small, council, he gave package.
Are you aware of the 10?
He gave you a copy of the charter, and they're listed right at the beginning of the charter, when the changes were made and what they were.
Do you have them, Mr.?
Yes, sir, you should have them.
Could you read them? I don't have it in this, in this last package you didn't give us, copy of the charter.
They're in there.
The book they gave, he don't have a copy of the charter.
I'll be happy to read them.
Can you read the dates, please?
Yes, sir. The original charter was adopted in 1962. There was an amendment in 1974 that changed sections 3.01, 3.06, and 12.03. In 1983, uh, excuse me, 1982.
Excuse me, what was those changes?
Sections 3.0.
I don't, I didn't mean what was the number, what were the physical changes that affected the charter?
I don't have that information available to me right now. I can tell you when the amendments were made and what sections of the charter were amended, but I can't give you the specifics.
But not what the amendments were?
No, sir.
Okay. And maybe that's why I missed it in there.
It's the front page of the charter. Do you want me to continue through?
No, if we don't know what the changes were, it's kind of mute to the point that I would like to make.
Well, I can tell you that in 2011, we amended the charter, and that dealt with putting the school board on a 2-2-3 rotation, trying to correct a problem where council had appointed some members to full three-year terms instead of appointing members to fill the expir, uh, unexpired portions of terms from people that had resigned.
I understand. I was trying to get a determination for council's knowledge. I was trying to get a determination if the previous charter changes, like the one that you just stated, affected the entire electorate, because I do believe that that's what a charter change should do. It should be something that affects all the citizens directly, you know, when we change something like that. And I was hoping that perhaps you could name them, because I was aware that of another set of charter changes that were made in the past that recused anyone who worked for the city from seeking a council position or an office. That was one of the changes that was added to our charter, but it didn't affect the electorate at large, it just affected individuals. So, I would like to say, I think that any charter amendments.
Look, McMoRan, we're getting into discussion phase of that, and we're not there yet.
Okay, and that's what I was, the reason I was asking, what those 10 were.
Well, I think it's important to know that the charter changes are public knowledge and they're in the charter, and if you needed that information, it was there for you to research and to gain. It's there.
Mm-huh.
Is anyone else who would like to speak?
To Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor Johnson, members of the council, city manager and city attorney. Good evening. We have heard a beautiful presentation of changes for the charter. Some of the changes are good. I think, for instance, Proposal One has, doesn't have enough definition, basically. It's too general and broad. I think if you're going to vote on the proposals, you should vote on them individually. Proposal Four, I agree basically with Steve. Basically, you should have a right, if you're holding office, to run for another office, basically. One and four, basically. Two and three, I think are excellent tools. We've had an attorney to come up, which I respect, and several more that I know, but those tools can be used for strong government. They can be instituted to help our city council and government move forward. And as you know, the law works and interpretation works more than one way. So, it can help us, or it can weaken us. It all depends on how we approach it. However, I believe that the recall is a good thing. We need people in office who are going to work for the city once they're elected, they're going to work for the city and do a good job. If they're not, recall is in order. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Chairman Johnson. Mrs. Flin, this is Williams, a distinguished counsel, Everett Williams, Ward Two. I'm here to support the proposed charter changes as presented, I think, by Councilman Burgess a couple of meetings ago. I think we ought to be going forward, and I hope you will present them, pass on them tonight so they can get to this session of council. I believe the changes that have been proposed will improve the governance of our city, and they're sorely needed in the short term as well as the long term. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you wish to do so.
Mr. Macklemore, would you please take the mic?
I would like to present to the council, my public address, a presentation that I have prepared to take a look at what we're considering doing tonight. Okay. Then, then I'm, I can't see my eyes in a sense. I would like citizens to be able to, they can feel that. But I will share with you, it took a lot of time, I took a lot of time considering what I wanted to call this proposal. And I came up with the title only after a confirmation that I received Saturday when I read the newspaper, that one of my most arch opponents had wrote an editorial regarding the charter changes. And we are here tonight because some people don't know what a charter is. It's a document issued by a sovereign state or outlining the conditions under which a corporation or colony, city or other corporate body is organized and defining the rights and privileges. But to me, our charter, our city charter is like a constitution is to our nation, not to be taken lightly when considering amending or tampering with it. Our charter is strong, flexible, and enduring, exactly the way it was designed to be by the founding fathers with wisdom of foresight. I think there are four important answers the citizens deserve to know. What is the reason that we're amending our charter tonight? What benefit will these changes create? Why not have a referendum on them? And why must we have it in session by December 5th? These questions were asked and some of the answers that I received was because some citizens feel that certain council members are out of control, because council members misbehave improperly. Um, I asked, what is the citizen benefit? They said the citizens can recall you if you do something unpopular. I asked, what's the urgency? I was told, it's just that time. I was told by the mayor, actually, our charter hasn't been changed, but once in fifty years it's outdated and it needs to be changed.
Please excuse me, did you reference, did I told you that?
Yes, that's what you told me when I discussed.
I did not ever say that.
Wait, oh, that's what it sounded, that's what I heard. Okay, the powers charter changes, the four proposals have been endorsed by the city attorney as legal and recommended. They could be called suggestions, recommendations, proposals, resolutions, additions, but actually they were just ideas. What's our justification for making them into laws and inventing new crimes? The added provisions are a recall provision, exhibit one, additional forfeiture clauses, removal from office for violating the charter, resign council to run for mayor, and interfering with the city manager. Well, the current Franklin City Charter offers no recall position supporting the election process. There's only one provision in the charter that causes forfeiture of elected office, being convicted of a felony. The charter specifically says, you do not have to resign your council seat to run for mayor. Franklin is a city manager form of government with the powers of the council and the city manager detailed in the charter, and no penalties or crimes for inquiries or recommendations referred to as interference. The founding fathers crafted a document that is perfect in its design. It is obvious that a great deal of time and thought went into its construction, including adding to and leaving out what they knew would weaken our government. It is so perfect that this council has the power to change it as its elected officials. The founding fathers have fully expected and addressed every provision recommended in these changes being sought. The evidence is in the numbers. Thirty-nine cities and no one city has these four charters, these four amendments in their charter. Less than twenty-five percent statewide have any. We, the council, are more than just policymakers, we're the keepers and stewards of the charter. We should be preserving it with the respect and integrity it deserves. In regards to the recall provision, this provision was not included in our charter, ensuring power would always be retained by those in charge. It is also a capital concern in regards to budgeting for recall elections with no limitation on grounds. We very well could find ourselves in a situation where we have two or three recall elections within one year, and we have to, provided the citizens, we get fifteen percent of the citizens from award or fifteen percent from the citizens across the city, we have to submit that to a judge, and if the signatures are found to be valid, we have to have an election. Can we afford to have recall elections every time a council member makes a decision that is unpopular with the citizens? I think a perfect example of that might have been the Navy issue. But our founding fathers, they knew that things like this would happen. And why no recall, recall is because these wise men that created our charter, perhaps they chose to leave out of the charter intentionally. The recall may have been left out because if an elected official had to make an unpopular vote on information or details that were not understood by the general public, the threat of intimidation from a recall would be removed, allowing him to vote his conscience. Also, only four other cities in the state have this as part of their charter, the way that we are talking about putting it in our charter. Four cities out of thirty-nine. The forfeiture provision is a council tool that can be used to remove elected officials, the most extreme of the disciplinary options, used simply to force the removal of someone from office. No other penalty, such as fines, suspension, or formal reprimand have ever been considered to address disciplinary concerns. Included in this provision is the term disorderly behavior, which the city attorney explained, there is no definition for disorderly behavior. So if the council wants to say that your behavior is inappropriate, they will have an opportunity to, for people vote, and you're out. I don't think that this was the intent of our founding fathers when they constructed our charter. On the justification for the forfeiture provisions, the city attorney who did an in-depth study offered us many cities that are doing these things. Well, moral turpitude is found in only three city charters of thirty-nine charters in the state, Alexandria, Richmond, and Williamsburg. Possession of marijuana or other controlled substance is found in only one, in Richmond. Lacking the qualification to hold office, only one, Williamsburg. Violing any express prohibition of the charter is found in one, Williamsburg. None in Hampton Roads. Interfering with the selection of employees by city manager or directing or giving orders to any employee of the city manager or contacting any employee of the city manager except through the city manager is in four charters of thirty-nine in the state, Harrisburg, Newport News, Roffel, and Williamsburg. Why not include the new forfeiture provisions? Because the two most important forfeiture provisions are already included and clear in the existing charter. One being, if you're convicted of a felony, a felony is deemed to be a very serious offense by our court, by our judicial system. And if someone is convicted of a felony, they will forfeit their office. They will actually have to step down from council until, if they're charged with a felony, until they're found not guilty. So the founding fathers took this into consideration, if it's not a serious enough crime to go to jail for, it's not a serious enough crime to kick you off of council after you've been elected. Because you give politicians power to remove or force citizens, uh, force citizens, elected officials, out of office against the will of the people without any other recourse, such as a fine or a penalty, short of the forfeiture. The language is too vague and biased regarding discipline and disorderly conduct. Resign from council provision. This provision provides that any sitting councilman wishing to pursue the office of mayor must resign their seat on council. The justification for resigning council seat, because, again, four cities out of thirty-nine cities of the, in the state of Virginia, four cities have it in their charter. Just four statewide. Thirty-five other cities in the Commonwealth of Virginia do not have this in their charter. The reasons to reject this provision, it violates the current charter that expressly supports a council person retaining their seat if losing a race for mayor. Unlike an absent recall provision, their legislative wishes are clearly stated. There has never been a problem with this issue in our city. The timing is wrong to even consider changing this provision right now, an election is only months away. And it presents the perception of political trickery as being involved. Violating express provision of the charter in a newspaper, this provision is lumped with the forfeiture provision, not only for specific violations, but including improper behavior. And the Virginia Code 15.2-1400 authorizes, but not require, local governments to discipline its members. The city attorney says there's no limitation as to what discipline should be, and there is no limitation on what type of offense that can be disciplined. However, he failed to recommend any discipline except forfeiture for any violation. You can vote, only fourteen, less than half, of the thirty-nine charters allow any type of discipline of their elected officials. The justification for this provision, I find none. Why not adopt this provision? Because it's redundant to the forfeiture provision? It tampers with the strong charter we already have in place, and it creates additional undue stress on decisions. The interference provision, this provision is already addressed in the current city charter, stating that all employees work under the direction of the city manager, and the only purpose for, uh, only for the purpose of inquiry may a council member communicate with any staff. The difference is, if you make a recommendation regarding appointment or removal of their staff, you will be charged with a criminal offense and removed from office, creating a new class-three criminal misdemeanor. I'd like to contend that no other employee employed by the city, if they commit a violation of asking a question, will be charged with a crime. To create a crime for your elected officials is more harsh than we have on our own citizens. And I would compel this council to ask the Attorney General for clarification as to if imposing a crime upon the elected officials for asking questions or making recommendations would meet a legal criteria. And I think that it's been shown that there's times where the city, the Attorney General has disagreed with our opinions here in Franklin. And the justification for this provision is council members have said to the city manager that some department heads should be disciplined or terminated for poor performance or for failing to follow city policy. Also, to protect friends and favorites from being replaced or reprimanded on the recommendation of anyone from council. The final justification is the city manager has dictatorial control of staff without accountability to council. Now, why no interference provision? The issue is addressed in the current city council, in the current city charter. No one on council has exercised such a violation of our current charter, instructing any employee of the city to do anything, or ordered the city manager to hire or fire anyone. We would still have the right to inquire, except inquiry could be interpreted as interference and justify criminal offense charges, being brought against an elected official for discussing personnel with the city manager, resulting in a forfeiture. It removes the right of council to exercise its responsibilities regarding motions, resolutions, or changes of heart regarding all city staff under the threat of criminal charges and forfeiture. Are these good reasons for us to change our charter? A disagreement with colleagues? Just because a small group can, a small group requested, a group of maybe ten to thirty people have requested it? Because we have different political opinions? Is it a good reason to change our charter because we have different political styles? Or because five out of thirty-nine cities have done some? Only five out of thirty-nine cities have done these things that we're talking about doing, and none, I compel, none have all four of these provisions? How will these proposed charter amendments affect the current city charter? Well, the recall provision could intimidate elected officials from voting what they feel is right, due to fear recall if decision is unpopular. Create new forfeiture provisions that allow the council to remove its own members that they may not like for improper behavior. Create new fragile violations that can be easily interpreted as violating the provisions of the charter, political removal of elected officials. Changes intentional language in the charter referring to resigning to the council to run for mayor. These are things that the forefathers looked at, and they intentionally left it out of our, these things out of our charter, because they would deteriorate the fabric of our charter. Why not now? All these proposed changes are designed to place more control over city council members while granting power, greater power, to a city manager than has ever been written into our charter at any time. Now that we are about to hire a total stranger as city manager to control of our city, I would compel this council to please wait. I'll close with a comment from the editor and publisher of the Todd Water News. And this whole council and anybody in this city knows that Steve Stewart is not a supporter of Greg Macklemore. He has spoken against me on every opportunity that presented itself, and even in this last article. He presented me in a much less than flattering light. But I would have to contend, please listen to what he says, Macklemore will self-destruct in due time. To change the charter, it isn't worth it. To change the charter because you're not happy with the actions of a council person. So please, do not have a rush to judgment and consider, who will these charter amendments benefit besides the council and control of the council? Will they present a benefit to all the citizens of Franklin? And can we afford constant recalls every time somebody is unhappy with a decision that we make? And lastly, the timeline, the reason I said rush to judgment and on every slide, this was brought to us on October 24th. The very next meeting, we got an legal opinion. Now we're at the very next meeting, and we're ready to send it to Richmond. I think that our charter deserves more discussion. One of the. One of the drafters, the original drafters of our charter, could be reached to ask perhaps, why did they not include some of the provisions that you would like to add? I compel my colleagues, please do not rush to judgment. There is no reason, no one is, the people are not crying out for recall of anyone on this body. No one has, uh, has done the offenses of trying to tell the city manager. People have said what they think she should do, but no one has ordered the city manager to do anything. No one has ordered an employee to do anything. No one has announced that they would be running for mayor. All of these, these provisions that you're asking to add to change our charter are not worth us rushing to judgment. I think we should give this more consideration before we adopt this and send it to the General Assembly.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Public hearing is still open. Going once, twice. The public hearing is now closed, and now I open the floor to the council for any questions or comments on the public hearing or on the amendments that have been put forward. Anyone?
I'd like to, uh...
Mr. Bly?
Let's say. You know, I've been on council eighteen months, and I've run a lot of how the city government works, and so it's good, and there are areas we need to dig through. Uh, as a councilperson, I was told the city manager and the city attorney work for the city council. But the issues that I've had, it seems like the city council is working for the city manager and the city attorney.
Mr. Blatt?
I'm, uh, I'm...
You just have to direct it toward the four.
I am, I am.
Okay.
I am. But the thing is, with the change here, and I have due, a lot of respect for the ones that, that wrote it and borrowed the issues and all that. But I think we're missing the vote here. I, I think if all of this goes through, it's, it's going, it's going to lock up the city councilor representatives in all six wards, that we're not going to have any, any right to ask the city manager, we can inquire. But to ask the city manager, I know there was an issue here, and I really thought, uh, the last paragraph on the non-interference section was, was, uh, spitting at me. Because we, uh, and I'm going to use this as an example, uh, we have an issue here where there was a violation of policy, and I was confronted by an official outside of the city government, and I addressed to Ms. Fleming and Mr. Williams. And I said, I'd like to, if I escape this, and we find who did it, I'd like to make a recommendation. I didn't say, I said, make a recommendation, that you terminate him, because this is not professional, it's not good for the city of Franklin, it's a strict violation. And so, it all comes back to me that when I, Ms. Fleming, I'll sit in the manager, and I think it's very personal. Uh, I'm not going to tell you, Mr. Bly, who it is or what action I've taken.
Mr. Bly?
Hold on, let me, let me finish, let me finish. And I want people to know where I'm coming from. Uh, I'm not going to tell you because the, 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 uh, policy says I don't have to. And I'm not going to break policy and tell you. But we've broken policy the whole time I've been on city council, and nobody else has been held accountable for it. And you people need to really look at this, the citizens of Franklin, on this charter deal, because it's going to come back, it's not as, as great as everybody thinks it is. But I really think as an overall, for the, the different policies that I've seen, I've seen broken, and sort of, uh, I can't understand as a councilperson, why, as a councilperson, we have issues like this that I can't be told?
Are you specifically addressing eight amendments?
Yes, yes, I am, yes.
Would you identify which one that is?
Oh, all right, all right. Let me finish. So, what I'm saying here, all said and done...
No, you have to address the issue, please. That's what we're about...
All right, all right. Let's go to number four. Command section three point oh nine B of the charter by adding to existing provisions language that a councilmember cannot direct a request in employment of any person or the removal of any person from employment of the city who is a subordinate of the city manager and making a violation of this provision, a class-three misdemeanor, requires forfeiture of his position on council. Now, I think it's very personal. As a representative, when, when the people put you to post and they elect people representing them in their wards, we had the stewardship to take you, the people, uh, to, to be your, your voice in city government. But it looks like we, it's trying to shut us down where a councilmember can't ask anything. But I, I, I truly feel like, I truly feel like as an overall, and I do respect everybody tonight's support of this, you know, I respect that. But, uh, I, I really do feel like this is you're going to wrap around, you know, and let the whole city voice their opinion on this and, and see what comes up. And, and people say do it, say let's go ahead and do it in the past, okay?
Thank you.
But I think that's the way, way we need to go with this.
Thank you.
You are.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak that has not spoken to these amendments?
I haven't spoken since we've been...
Mr. Mclemore, you spent eighteen minutes addressing each of these, and I think it's unfair to continue that...
Well, I, I mean, other colleagues can join in, but I think that I would be remiss if, all I got to say, I stayed pretty much to my, um, presentation, and I did it during public time. Now, you've closed the public hearing, and I would like to continue to discuss this considering this is only the third meeting.
You made that point.
That we are having a chance to even talk about it.
That is correct.
So, I would like to ask my colleagues to tell me, why are we not considering any sort of punishment short of forfeiture? Why is the only solution to any problem, kick them out? Could somebody answer me that?
Any other questions or comments?
Yes. Uh, I'd like to say that I do support the citizens having recourse. If they elect me, they should, um, have the recourse to recall me. And it is not as easy as saying that we're just going to have, um, um, recall after recall because they have a procedure to go through, the fifteen percent, the petitions, the court. So, it, it's not very simple just to recall a councilmember, but they should have that recourse if they, they deem it necessary. Um, for the resigning of the seat to run for mayor, I, I, I was not completely for that, but in thinking about it, uh, Mr. Tillamier asks, does that stop if a person decides to run for, a councilmember decides to run for mayor in, during the middle of their term? Does that prevent council having to, um, um, place someone to fill an unexpired term?
If the councilmember runs during the middle of his or her term, then the answer to the question is, if the person, well, either way, yes, you would have to fill the seat in the middle of the term. If the councilperson chooses to run at the end of his or her term, then the answer is no. You don't have to fill a term. Somebody else would have the opportunity in advance to know that the seat's going to be vacant, and then they could, uh, go ahead and file the petitions to run for the vacant, what will be a vacant seat.
So, it's not possible for a person to say, okay, I am going to run for mayor, and they have to resign the thirtieth?
Effective on the thirtieth.
Okay. So, at the time that they start running for mayor, could not a person get petition signed to run for that seat to prevent a vacancy from occurring on council?
No, because it's not a vacancy until the election actually occurs and the person is sworn in for the office of mayor. Then it becomes a vacancy. So, then you have a resignation in the middle of a term, and because it's a resignation in the middle of the term, you fill the vacancy as opposed to an election process if it were at the end of a term.
Okay. So, if it's in the middle of, council appoints or replaces, um, that person to fill the unexpired term either way?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Whether they're elected or not elected, yes.
Let's ask, uh, Mr. Williams a question.
Uh, you, yes?
All right. Going back to, uh, a policy, as a councilperson, we know what the policy is, and we see a violation, this sort shuts us down from, you know, addressing, we can dress it to the city manager. But if you don't, but you don't find the right, uh, action has been taken, then we just have to sit back and take it, right?
No, sir.
Well, how to, how to, all right, tell me what to do next. I, I'd like to hear from you.
You have two options. You can discuss it out in open session, and council can come to a consensus as to what action you want to direct the city manager to take, and council can take a vote on that proposal and direct the city manager to take a specific action. The other thing that you can do is do a motion to go into closed session and go in and discuss personnel issues with the city manager in closed session. You have two options available to you.
Well, we've been shut down so many times, says a personnel issue can't be discussed.
A personnel issue can't be discussed. Personnel is not in your bailiwick.
Okay.
In public.
Clarify that, because I'm, I'm with you. You're saying, you're saying in public, you're saying in public or in private?
Personnel matters are the matters of the city manager.
So, question now. If council is concerned, if I'm concerned about behaviors that maybe the city manager doesn't know about with our staff, is it appropriate to present that in closed session under personnel?
Yes. Don't answer that, Mr. Mayor, she asked him. She asked the city attorney, Mr. Mclemore. Go ahead, tell her. Tell her.
You can go into closed session on personnel matters. You can discuss everything that's under two point two dash three seven one one A one. You can do a discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment. You can do assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline, resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. I mean, the door is wide open for you to discuss departments or department heads in closed session.
Okay. So, my point is that we can't act individually, but we can take it to council in closed session. And if council, the consensus of council is to direct the city manager, we can do so.
Yes, ma'am.
It just keeps us, it limits us from acting individually.
Yes, ma'am, and as I indicated...
Or directly.
Oh, directly, yes.
And as I indicated to Councilman Bly, you could also have an open discussion right up here. I mean, there's nothing that, that says you have to go into closed session to discuss those matters. It may be more appropriate in, in closed session, but you can certainly have in mind a directive that you want to give the city manager that deals with personnel matters and, and do a motion and direct the city manager.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, for the city attorney. Um, isn't it in the language that voting for a motion, resolution, or ordinance in violation of this section shall be guilty of a class-three misdemeanor, and upon conviction therefore shall forfeit office as a councilmember? So, that's saying if that provision is on limitation of powers discussing the, talking to the city manager about her subordinates or any of her employees. It is in the resolution, the first resolution proposed. It is the, begins at like the sixth line from the bottom. Any councilmember violating the provision of this section or voting for a motion, resolution, or ordinance in violation of this section shall be guilty of a class-three misdemeanor. So, if we got in closed session or open session, and we were dissatisfied with a, something that a subordinate of the city manager was doing, in closed session or in, in private, because it used the word privately up here also, then we could be cited for a violation of this provision? Thank you, you're indicating correct, Ms. Fleming, thank you. We could be cited for a violation and forfeited and kicked out of office for even trying to make a motion to change something that the city manager's doing. That, is that statement accurate?
Well, first, let's, let's deal with one thing. When you're, you said privately, please understand that what that's referring to is you privately giving an order to a subordinate of the city manager.
Okay.
You can't go privately to a subordinate and order that person to do something.
I stand corrected on that.
Okay.
Uh, to any subordinate of the submit, city manager as far as giving them orders. But once we, uh, the vice mayor has presented a, a scenario, if we have a complaint and we're not getting it addressed by the city manager, whoever it may be, according to the way this language is written, we would not be able to make a motion to instruct the city manager to get a new police chief, get a new public works director, get a new fire chief, get a new anything. Because if we did, please correct me if I'm wrong, if we did take a, make a motion to do something pertaining to that, to the operation of the, or the subordinates of the city manager, we would be in violation and have committed not only a violation but a crime. Is that true according to the way this is written?
That's what it says.
I, I would say that that is the correct interpretation, and that is what I think is being presented. That is not our job. Our job would be to go in the closed session, this is how I see it. We go in the closed session and we tell the city manager as a group what we don't like. Who is our employee? The city manager is our employee. What would you do as a boss if you have a, an employee who doesn't do what you want to do? You'd discipline the city, the employee. And if it doesn't get rectified, then you terminate the employee. That would be, to me, that would be the process that you would go through. We would go in the back, we would talk to the city manager, try to impress upon her that as a council, this is what we see as a problem, and it would be up to him or her to come forward with a recommend, with the proper thing. If not, then we have no recourse back against that person. We have recourse against the person sitting in this chair.
I agree. However, by, by virtue of us trying to say the city manager's in disagreement with us pertaining that individual, we have no recourse. She says, I'm sorry, that's my department, you don't like it tough. We have no recourse but to either terminate the city manager, because if we make recommendation or try to make a motion to do anything as a group, we all six of us agree that the, 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 whatever department head is, is, is not meeting our standards, but the city manager feels as though they're doing okay. We, as council, have no recourse except to fire our city manager when we just have a problem with a, a department head. I think to limit us to not be able to discuss matters of, of the employees for a purpose of inquiry, I did not say we'd have to give her orders. I'm saying the language says that we don't make a motion, a ordinance, or a resolution in violation of that provision, and if we do, if we even make it...
That would be giving her orders.
Yes, exactly right. You say you don't want to give her an order, but then you want to put her...
What this provision is for is to preserve the city manager form of government.
I understand...
And our recourse is, and any good city manager, if it was carrying out the will of the council, is going to work toward making that happen.
I agree. One thing... One thing-
Let me, let me make this suggestion. The language is very suitable, and I think the, it's been twisted a little bit using the example. I don't think you can come in, I think your suggestion was the police chief, so I'm going to follow through with that. If, I don't think you can come in and do a motion to order the city manager to fire the chief of police, okay? You can institute a motion and follow through with new policy and say, this is going to be the policy from this point going forward. The city manager then has to go to that employee and have that employee either adapt himself or herself to the new policy, or the city manager is going to have to replace the employee. And so that's how you control it. That's consistent with the language and with the idea that you can't tell the city manager to fire a person through a motion or an ordinance or something of that nature. You control it through your policy.
Can you make a recommendation?
You may.
Yeah.
You may, and there is no violation, but let's just say that you had four people that got together and put forth a motion and got four votes to direct the city manager to do something. That would be in violation?
Who would be in the-
The four that voted for would be in violation of this directive and not working through the city manager, but directing the city manager concerning her employees, and that is in violation of the city manager form of government.
I understand.
Therefore, the city manager, a good one, that wants to keep their job, would try to work with carrying out the wishes of city council, and if there is a breach of that, then someone goes.
Okay, perfect example, you, I couldn't have came up with a better one. Please interpret this for me, Mr. Williams. If that case occurred, just as he said, the city manager could make a complaint to the council, and if it's found, yeah, they did that, then it would be no other recourse according to the provisions, but those per, people be charged with a class three misdemeanor and forfeit office, which would leave us with three council members, because four would have to be forfeited office, because they, they voted on something that was against the provisions. Isn't that accurate?
Well, if you had this on the books, you wouldn't take the vote, because you'd know the subject.
But, 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 once again, if, it wasn't, it wasn't in our charter, maybe our forefathers thought about these things and talked about these things when we haven't. So that's why I'm saying, we're creating scenarios to justify this provision when, Ms. Fleming, can I ask you a question, and I think the citizens might-
By the way, you created the scenario.
I'm going to ask a direct question. Have you, in my eighteen months on council, have I ordered you to do anything?
Mr. Macklemore-
Hold on, wait a minute, only one knows-
Mr. Macklemore, we must stay on task.
The point is, we are writing a resolution that says we don't want anybody telling the city manager what to do with her people. Now, why would we have that on the table unless that was happening?
It's not directed at anyone.
Well, has anyone on this council instructed you to dismiss an employee or to hire an employee? Has any of this body, this body done that?
She doesn't have to answer.
See? So why are we putting in, making charter amendments for things that haven't happened?
The provision is in the charter already for proper conduct.
So why are we amending our charter?
What is absent is any way to deal with the violation of that. There is no methodology.
I understand, Mr. Mayor.
And that's why-
Has there been a violation to create-
That's why it's there.
A law, has there been a violation? So we're making a law to prevent a violation.
I would hope so.
Even though there's been no evidence that there's nobody doing it, we're going to make a law that says if you do it, you get kicked out.
There's-
Well, there, there's a lot of them in the city charter, I, I could be wrong, I don't know the history of Franklin that well, but I don't know that there's been anybody convicted of a, a drug thing, but since, I think that was what you read was in state law, is that not, Mr. Williams?
There is a state law forfeiture provision for conviction.
But, I mean, so there are a lot of laws-
You may have somebody in, in the state of Virginia.
There are a lot of laws put in place that are to keep people from doing things that they're not supposed to do.
I, I will support that.
Does anybody else have a question?
I, I look at this as being just a way of putting teeth in to make us, to be able to do the way that the charter is asking, and if we violate it, we have, there is some recourse against it. At the same time, on the recall, I had one system, I think probably named it right, it's called the lemon law. And if you hire, if you hire a lemon, you need a chance to get rid of one, and I think that would be the best way to do it, is to a recall, and it's done by those that voted you in office, not the city council or anybody else at all. I think that the, the city employees, we go back for a minute to the, to the other item from the city manager. The employees do not need seven bosses plus one. They don't need eight bosses or the potential of having eight bosses, no operation can run that way. And who takes precedence? Does the mayor have more say so than me with an employee, or does the city manager have more say so? I think all four of these have my support as far as being added to the charter. I think you have to look at the charter, it's a living document that needs to grow, et cetera. I, I see where the, the paper was referred to, but what was it referred to is that Mr. Stewart only had problems with one of the charter amendments, not with all of them.
He said two.
He said one.
Anyone else have any comment, Ms. Hughes? We haven't heard from you.
What's the rush?
We've already had conversation, the rules apply.
Why are we rushing this? We didn't talk about a referendum.
Mr. Macklemore, you have had your time.
I do feel that we need some teeth in our charter. It's come, it has come a time for the teeth, I believe, and putting this in the charter would not affect us if we govern ourselves properly. Only question I have is, it still takes four votes to go into, the attorney, four votes to go into closed session. Okay, if, if I have a problem with an employee, I have to get four votes off council. So the four council members would have to know something about what I'm going in closed session for. So we have to work with our council members and let them know that we are going, you want to go in closed session for whatever it is about the employee. Somebody say.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Bligh, we, we, you've had three times. I'm sorry, you've got one minute.
Oh, one minute, okay. You know, we're here, pointing fingers at our city council.
Now, you must address the four.
All right, the four. All right, but I think you need to, uh, exercise and focus on enforcing policy in this town and not who you are or what, and being held accountable for your actions. And this is not just city council members either, something like that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm, I'm conflicted, there's some provisions in here that I, of each, not each section, but some of the sections, but we flop back and forth, I've heard people flopping back and forth about what this section says or that section, and we're getting them confused, and sometimes I get confused.
Yeah.
But the only, the recall, I think is the only thing that talks about behavior. I don't think forfeiture is talked about in behavior. So we as a council, you can act any way you want to, anybody can, and we can't terminate you. That's not our responsibility, and I don't think that's given to us, and I might have misread, but I don't believe that was given to us. It's only the citizens who get to judge whether you have misbehaved, and they put you there, they should have the right to say whether you've misbehaved or not. So we need to really make sure that we focus on each individual piece and we're true and correct about what we say. The other thing that I'm conflicted about is I've heard members of council say that this has to be about them, but then turn around and say, but it's never happened, so why would we want to, why would we want to put it in? If it's happening about you, then it's already happened. If it hasn't already happened, I, I just get conflicted, but I will tell you that most of these provisions, as have been stated, are in another charter, and the one that was specifically referenced about interference comes almost word from word from the Portsmouth City Charter, I just looked it up. It is almost word for word. So I don't know unless Portsmouth came down here and about ten years ago and looked into the future, or whenever they amended their charter and put it in and looked in the future and saw somebody on this council sitting there, how they could write it word for word and yet it be about somebody on this council. So, you know, I, I just get conflicted information and conflicted statements that, that really bother me some. Anyway, I support these resolutions. I think it's good governance and we need to move forward with it.
Mr. Mayor, can I have an opportunity to rebut?
Let me get a motion on the floor and then we can have the final discussion. Is there a motion to be put on the floor?
I move to-
Just one minute, the resolutions, are we going to vote on each resolution?
A motion to adopt the resolution.
All four of them or one?
We can do them one at a time?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, what would the city council play, be one at a time or all four? One at a time?
We do it one at a time, okay. Then I move that we accept the resolution that puts certain limitations on the city council, as far as-
Can we do that referencing the top line so we can identify by which resolution?
That's what I just said, section three, point oh nine. It's the first resolution in our book, and it deals with inquiry of subordinates circumventing the city manager and the city attorney.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I would like for us to consider removing the language of a class three misdemeanor for conviction and forfeiture and look at other potential punishments such as forfeiture of a month's pay or suspension from council, something of, some other forms to discipline our colleagues and the council members.
Do you want to put that in the form of substitute motion?
I will, if that's what I need to do, I would like to make a substitute motion that we alter the language to exclude forfeiture and replace it with another agreeable punishment for a council member.
I have a substitute motion on the floor first, is there a second for that? Hearing no second, there is no motion. The original motion is to adopt this res, to adopt this resolution. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Nay. Aye. Aye.
No. An aye, motion carries. Is there a motion for adoption of the second resolution?
Make a motion to adopt the resolution of the Franklin City Council in regards to section point three, point one zero, recall election of council members and mayor. Second.
I have a motion, a second on the floor, any discussion?
This, yep. This'll be my last night, I can battle for anything, I might as well enjoy it.
Is there any, is there any discussion?
Yes, it's discussing pertaining the second resolution, trying to clarify, this is the one that goes on with forfeitures?
No.
No, this is about recall.
This is recall, citizens having the ability or opportunity to recall.
She skipped one.
Recall.
Okay, this is the recall.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Nay.
Aye. Aye.
No.
An aye, motion carries. Is there a motion for the resolution pertaining to?
That's it, three point oh nine.
Yep.
Is that it?
Yes.
The one dealing with forfeiture?
Uh, referencing the forfeitures, based on council member forfeiting office, violation of charter, no longer resides, is convicted of a crime of moral perpetuity and failure to pay taxes. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
Move to adopt resolution, section three point oh nine.
That addresses those issues?
Yes.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, once again, I would like to say for the record that I don't know why our council is avoiding, considering, considering any punishment except forfeiture. That is the, oh, that is just one of several punishments and options available. Now, again, when it comes to the taxes, if there is a person, which by the way, I don't owe the city a brown penny in taxes, if there is any person that does, on this council that does owe taxes, I would say that the city is in the best position to collect that money easier from a council person than from a citizen. They can garner share their wages until the taxes are paid. So if it's a money thing, we have a way to get the money. So why do we need to only look at forfeiture? Kick them off? I would hope that our council would have some compassion for future council members and present another option as a punishment besides kick them off.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I want to make sure I understand number four on the real estate taxes and personal property taxes. Taxes are due December and June, so let's say that this is December two thousand, two thousand and ten, June two thousand and eleven. So you have until June, December thirty one of two thousand and eleven to get both of those paid.
That's the way it's written.
Okay. And then the personal property taxes are due on December the fifth, and so you have three weeks to get those paid as it's written.
And that's a function of when they come due, because they're on fiscal year. Basically pay your personal property taxes in the middle of the fiscal year and you're paying real estate taxes, two taxes. Obviously, if you want to use some other date, for instance, if you want to change the, uh, due date for the taxes to say June thirtieth as opposed to December thirty first.
No, what I want to say, I'd like to spearhead this, we're going back, things about city council. And it goes like, if he fails to pay our annual real estate taxes and or personal property taxes, then you be voted off the council. But then, I look at it, we've got the booting going on in Franklin, and we've got taxes, food taxes up at thousands of dollars. Yeah, you go come back to council person, if he's a few days late, then you will kick him off. I don't think it's fair, because everybody has hard times. You tell me all you want to, everybody has hard times in different areas. So I don't think this is really fair to say, if you're not paid right, right on date or a few days past, you're going to be kicked off the council. I think that's a missing justice and it is, that's not good stuff.
Mr., I'd like to address that. It isn't a surprise when taxes are due, nor is it a surprise of what we owe, and everyone has to plan for that, and we as public servants have to set the example, and I think it's irresponsible for us to do anything but ask what our, to do what we've asked our citizens to do. How can we go to them and say, we're going to penalize you or do something else when we haven't done ourselves? I just think that's not morally correct.
Well, how do we sit here on council and let people build up thousands of dollars of food taxes?
That's a whole other issue. They don't hold public office.
But it's the same ballpark.
They don't hold public office.
Mr. Mayor?
People aren't going to let you.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would contend that you're correct, but the council person that would be laid on their taxes, they are subject to the same fines and penalties as a citizen.
They are indeed.
Why should they not have an opportunity to have some other punishment imposed besides being kicked off of council, but went by, you know, when they were elected by the people, when we could always fine the person or collect the tax money? If the goal is to collect the tax money, we have achieved our goal. Or is it a goal to be able to find another way to remove people from office?
I don't think it has anything to do with finding a way to get rid of people. I think it has everything to do with the council as elected officials setting the example of proper behavior and proper obligation, and if we can't do it, then why should we be able to impose penalties on others?
So why wouldn't we withhold the council person's pay- So why wouldn't we withhold the council person's pay until the money is paid or something like that? Why?
You're missing the point.
That's punishment.
The point is not about punishment. The point is about obligation for public service and doing it appropriately. And for us not to pay our taxes on time is not right. It is not, it's not a good point.
Why would the council person put counsel in jeopardy to have to make this decision when they can voluntarily go right down to the treasurer's office and say, take it out of my paycheck, I can't pay him on time, take it out of my paycheck, instead of putting us in a position of having to make that decision? That would, that's the responsible thing.
I agree, unless, unless, I can only reference myself in, as far as this is concerned. Before, I owed some taxes before I was elected. And before I ran, I went and made arrangements with the treasurer, a payment schedule to get those taxes caught up and paid. Now, my taxes have well been paid up for a while and my current taxes that are due on the 5th, if you don't pay them by the 5th or late, even they're paid. So you have an opportunity to go and work out something. But this provision that you're writing into our law says you wouldn't have that opportunity. You get behind in your taxes, you get kicked off council. And I'm saying, why are we being so, so, so using the most extreme, you know, method we can? Why aren't we trying to find a way to make both things work? A person runs on hard times, they shouldn't have to lose their elected position, but they do have to pay their taxes and we have a way of getting it and we will take it. How come we're not even discussing for any of these provisions? Anything but, you got to go.
I get back to, I get, okay, go ahead.
May I use myself as an example of why we should do this? We are here at tax time and my term ends and if I do not run and win or whatever, if I'm not on council again, then I don't get a check from the city. And I owe eight thousand dollars and I don't think the city can garnish my wages for eight thousand dollars between now and, and the time I'm off of council. So that's one reason.
So you're saying, if I understand you correctly, you're saying a council person in a one year, they can accrue more taxes from the city than they make?
Yes, sir.
So because they can accrue more taxes, which, I mean, you're a unique situation on eight thousand dollars and that's your personal thing. But still, because you're coming off of council, or maybe coming off council, you feel as though they would have no way to collect. So if you get behind...
Under your scenario.
Under my scenario, I'm saying that it's an alternative to kicking someone off. If you're coming off anyway, it really doesn't make a difference. But to force someone who has been elected by the people off the council because they have some hard economic times...
Under your scenario that you just presented.
Well, what scenario would they not?
Under your scenario, you said garnish wages.
I said that's a, that's, that's a recommendation.
That's the point I...
Well, mine is a...
Mr. Mayor? You don't get the tax bill the day it's due. It's called planning, it's called taking care of your business. You know ahead of time if you're gonna be coming up short for whatever the reasons, for the most part. And you can go see Ms. Bab and she will gladly take care of it and work with you on it. I think the key here is that it comes before council and the council person has a right to defend themselves and to talk about it. Certainly, it would be looked at if you had gone and taken care of business and in fact had made payments by using your counseling pay to help meet it, that would all be taken into consideration. But by saying, gee, you know, they can garnish my wages, that's after the fact, not before the fact, and that's not taking care of business. And if you can't take care of your own business, how are you gonna take care of the citizens?
And I give back to the fact, it's all about the principle of being, being responsible to the electorate to set the example and to do, pay our dues as we are required.
Finally, Mr. Mayor, since you responded after Mr. Cheatham, would you, would you be kind enough to offer me an answer to, as to why none of these provisions, none of these provisions, I'm asking you directly, sir, none of these provisions offer any type of punishment except forfeiture?
My only response is it is not about punishing anybody, it's about holding people to a high standard of public service, period. And if we cannot be held to that high standard, we do not have the right to serve.
So you don't feel as though there's any forfeiture other than execution, basically?
No, sir.
That's basically it. You did, you're out.
All right, I have a motion and a second on the floor. And we've had, we, Mr. Bly, have you spoken to this before?
Yes, everybody has.
Okay, that we've had...
But let me tell you one thing. I have no problem with what we're trying to do here to afford, but I think a referendum would be the proper way to go to give every boss in this town the opportunity to voice their opinion.
Okay.
And that goes here. And so I don't think that has to be much...
Okay. Call for a question, Mr. Mayor. You've asked that, you've, you've mentioned that before.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a, I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
And aye. Motion carries. Thank you. One, two, three.
Resign.
Yep. Okay. May I have a motion on the, the last resolution relative to resigning a seat in order to run for the mayor?
Move to add resolution 3.11, which would add the new section for the candidate for election of mayor and a member of council and the member of council having to resign their seat.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion?
Yes. Mr. Mayor or one of my colleagues on council, would you tell me why, when only I believe four cities have this in Hampton Roads or out of Virginia and our entire Commonwealth, why are we pursuing this, this charter amendment? What is our purpose for pursuing this? Will, will no one answer the question? Everybody wants it, but nobody can tell me why?
I personally look at it as, as if you run for mayor and you've got two years left, if you're back on city council, you can actually be more of a destructive force to the council body as all, as opposed to being helpful to the, to the city council.
I appreciate your, your opinion, Mr. Cheatham, but that is, that is an opinion. Can anyone offer me a reason why it would be only a few cities are doing it? Why must we embrace this charter amendment as well? What is the urgency particularly to get it into the general session by December 5th? What is the urgency for us to embrace this charter change?
Were there two questions?
One question, what is the, what is the urgency in us pursuing this? Why is this for consideration?
Because we have till the 5th, the 5th of December to get it to the General Assembly for pre-filing.
And if we don't make it, what happens to our town? I mean...
We end up having to wait at least another year.
To see about an election. So the first question I asked is why are we entertaining this with such urgency to get it through immediately when this obviously is not unanimous? And how does it affect our citizenry to amend our charter to do this? And I would hope that my council, I appreciate Mr. Cheatham offering his opinion, that he thinks that if you ran, it might cause for a disruption, but I contend that if a person is unable to run and the mayor returns, they can still have contention there. So I don't think that because there may be some animosity on council, is justification for us to once again take a knife to our charter to alter it for a provision that only five cities in Hampton, in the state of the Commonwealth of Virginia has? Why are we, you know, so would you tell me why, Mr. Mayor?
You posed the question and if anyone wants to respond, they may, but no one is compelled to.
Well, for me, it takes the lottery effect out of it in knowing that, you know, if you desire to run for mayor, that's where your heart is, that's what you're gonna, gonna do. Not if you wanna run for mayor, then I'm lucky enough to win it and then I won't, you know, have to worry about my seat on council. But if I lose it, oh, I still have a seat. For me, that's the lottery effect.
Hasn't that been the lottery effect for fifty years in Franklin?
Mr. McMoore, you've asked a question. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just hope that our delegate is paying very good attention to this. We won't look at anything...
Mr. McMoore? Any other question or comment?
May I, may I? Now, I've heard Councilman McMoore say, he ran for mayor, whatever year, and I got X number of votes. I think that is unfair to the mayor, mayor's seat to say even anything of that nature. Even if it's true, it's true, but it is a conflict and it could cause some other conflicts.
Anyone else? I motion a second on the floor. All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
And aye. Motion carries. Thank you. So the four go to the General Assembly. The resolution will be forwarded to Delegate Morris with his submission to the legislative committee.
I'd like to make a comment.
On what subject?
On one of these amendments, but I think we...
Subject is closed.
...to citizens of Franklin. Everybody has a four.
We, we had a public hearing that allowed everyone and it was properly advertised and encouraged.
Mr. Mayor, respectfully, we never discussed the pros or cons of putting this to a referendum. We didn't even discuss it, but it was brought up. I'd contend that we didn't give a good answer why...
Okay, you've, you've made your point.
So I just, I just hope this, this isn't construed as, as fair government.
The next item on our agenda is ordinance concerning the Woodman of the World. Ms. Fleming or Mr. Williams?
Mr. Williams and Ms. Rickman have worked on this and it's been before you several times. I don't know if they have any more comments they want to make, Mr. Williams make.
When we were at the last city council meeting, it was determined that council wanted to give the exemption to Woodman of the World. I have drafted for your consideration two different ordinances. The state statute says that we have to have an ordinance, so I've drafted two different ordinances. The difference between the two ordinances is the timing with which the exemption will be granted. The first one makes the exemption take effect immediately, which is going to affect your current fiscal budget. The tax exemption is somewhere in the neighborhood of $2,400. Adopt the exemption that is for the current fiscal year 2011 and 2012. You are also going to have to have a corresponding budget amendment to reduce the budget by $2,400 because you obviously won't have that income. And the alternative, I have given you a proposal that would take effect for the 12-13 fiscal year, which would mean that the city manager in planning the budget for the next fiscal year would understand that this exemption had been granted and would not necessarily include the taxes that have been exempted in the budget. So you would not have an impact upon the budget other than the fact that the income would not be there. In other words, you don't have to go back and amend your budget. There wasn't, to my recollection, there wasn't any discussion about when the exemption was going to take effect. So the question is, do you want to make it effective immediately, which would result in a budget amendment to reduce the budget? Or do you wanna make it effective in the next fiscal year? You have a ordinance that would accommodate either desire.
My recommendation would be, or my thinking of that is that any, any request of that would come in with the understanding that it would be subject to an adjustment at the beginning of the following tax year, so that it would not affect any current budgeting, but it could be effective at the beginning of the next tax year as such as you have proposed in the second piece. And then that could be applied as a principle for those going forward. So if you make a request and it gets approved, it would not be affecting the existing budget, it would take effect the next budget billing cycle.
I would agree with that, especially in light that we have, we know at least one more, if not others, that will be coming forth if this is passed. So I would think making it effective for the next year would give us more to work with.
Other comments?
I can agree with that. My question is, do you have a deadline for application of it so it won't interfere with next budget?
No, because once you have grant, once this ordinance is adopted and put into effect to codify the exemption that you've already said you wanted Woodman of the World to have, going forward, as long as they continue using the property for that same charitable purpose, they don't have to file an application or do anything on an annual basis. If they change their use of the property, then they lose the exemption, but they don't have to do anything on an annual basis.
But I was speaking of others that may apply. How do you handle that as far as not affecting the current budget? Let's say...
Should we have a cutoff application?
Someone else, yeah, someone else comes forth after July, after the fiscal year starts and after the budget process for the next year. How do you deal with that?
Well, I think that's an issue that you have to consider at the time that it comes up. So for instance, if you adopt the budget, we'll say 30, and someone asks for an exemption in a meeting in June, you may say, well, we've already adopted the budget for the next fiscal year, so we will grant exemption, but it won't take effect in the next budget year. You'll just have to consider on a case by case basis is the best answer I can give you.
Mr. Mayor?
I would...
I don't want to confuse this issue at all, but I would ask that you consider that the budget is a planning document. It is not cast in concrete and it is based on estimates. Everything Turner Taylor has said is correct. I don't wanna leave you with the impression that we can manage our budget down to that minute amount. So it would depend on the amount of the exemption that the organization would have as to whether it would have such an impact on the budget that we would have to make a budget amendment. But you always do have the option that he suggested and that is to make it effective for a certain fiscal year. But we are not so good at budgets that we can budget it down to a hundred or a thousand dollars because things do change. It's just a planning document, which we cannot go outside of the guidelines on.
And it's the unknown is why I was saying the next, the unknown of those other ones that might be coming up. I think as far as a cutoff date, that might be appropriate for another discussion, but not part of this exemption.
Maybe something you wanna do during the budget process when somebody is here to do your budget?
Any further question?
We're talking about the budget and the money and in extended to the next tax season. But I remember back during budget time, we had an issue on our IT person, we didn't have the money for that. But since then, with the budget so tight, we've had, I think, six people and we've had two in the district department, I think four public works.
Mr. Bly, will you bring us...
Well, I wanna know...
On the exemption, please.
Yeah, yeah, but you're talking about the budget. Why come out there? Well, I wanna, I'd like to know where the money came from to do this.
Came from to do what?
No, wasn't in the budget.
Came from to do what?
Those positions were budgeted. Well, you hadn't shown them.
What does that have to do with the Woodman of the World? I'm sorry, I'm lost, what you're asking me, if anything.
Well, we didn't have the money in, in the budget for our, for time IT person.
That we're not talking about that, Mr. Bly.
I know, we're talking about the budget.
No, we're talking about the exemption only, please.
Yeah, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the budget that relates to this.
No, this doesn't. We're talking...
I know, we're talking about the budget.
No, we're talking about the exemption only, please.
Yeah, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the budget that relates to this.
No, this doesn't. We're talking about the exemption only. Please, we have to stay on the table. Okay, any further discussion on the exemption? May I have a motion to adopt one of the exemptions?
I move for adoption of the exemption from real property taxes for a nonprofit organization, taking effect with the fiscal year 2012, 2013.
The motion is our second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, before we leave that stuff-
Yes, sir.
Um, we talked about it at the last meeting. I can't remember whether we made a motion or if one of the meetings about coming back with some criteria. Have we, did we put that to a vote, a committee?
Come back to what?
With recommendations of a criteria for, so we don't go through this every time somebody comes up.
I think the criteria was fairly well established, was it not?
No, they're just options that you get to consider, but we haven't said what we want to consider. In other words, alcohol could be a plus or a minus. We haven't said, is it a plus or a minus? It's just, this is what you can consider. So if we haven't put into a motion, I would like to move that we form a committee. The city manager, the city attorney, finance director, commissioner of revenue, and two council members to serve on a committee to vet this process and come back with a set of criteria that will, can be used to further evaluate future nonprofit organization applications.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I, I don't know if it's a proper protocol to bring it up, but I support it the same way I did with that when I made the very identical motion to do a redistricting committee. I agree.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye. I'm sorry.
One more question?
Yes.
What about applications that may come in before we form that list of-
That would be up to us as to whether we consider them. I don't, I didn't put that in my motion, I don't.
I don't think we can deal with that because you don't win the result.
We might say we're gonna defer until then, or we might say we're gonna deal with it. I don't know.
What timeline did you have in there, or did you?
I didn't put a timeline on it. In the inbox of the city manager.
You know, one thing we might wanna consider-
I don't have an inbox anymore. I don't have an out.
One thing we might wanna consider in the future, if we have an idea like this, is to put it on the agenda for the next meeting with a proposed motion to give people time to work out the details.
I would prefer that.
Well, we can do that for this time.
I withdraw the motion. I just, we talked about it the last time, but we didn't do it in a form of a motion and then we didn't get it done.
That's right.
So we're gonna keep talking about it, let, the way to do it through a motion. I'll withdraw.
Okay, well, then if, if you don't mind withdrawing it, then let's put it on the agenda to come back with a motion with some direction in it. Is that acceptable?
Put it on the agenda. I have one more.
So you have a timeline and you can have, you know, the things you wanna consider. Would that work? Are you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay.
I just wanna get the process started.
Absolutely, okay. So the motion's been withdrawn and we'll have the city manager add it to her inbox.
Absolutely. I have one more.
I'm counting.
Emergency operations plan adoption?
I hope everyone was able to retrieve this document. I wasn't.
I wasn't either.
So-
Not until tonight.
Council is aware that we do have an emergency plan, which has to be-
Frozen up some kinda way.
Pardon me?
Just, ma'am?
We have, I was trying to get everybody's attention. Council is aware that we have an emergency plan that has to be revised every five years. We're at that point, this is probably the last really big, major project that I have on my schedule to get completed before I leave. We've worked very hard on it. Chief has taken it through some steps before it's gotten to use. The major step was getting the format approved. He'll speak to you about that. We've gotten the format approved and gotten the okay from Richmond on that. And we now have our revision before you, which has to go for final approval by the end of this calendar year, not fiscal year. It is a large document, but he'll tell you the major changes that are there.
Thank you, Ms. Fleming. The, the emergency operations plan is, is nothing, it's not a new document to the city. It's basically the, an annual review and revision happens every year with this document. But once and prior to this coming one that y'all hopefully will adopt tonight, it, it was required every five years that this come for y'all. That date will now be changed that after it's adopted tonight, if the, the adoption, the readoption will only be good for four, four years. So they actually dropped a year off the, the frequency that it will have to be read adopted. The biggest changes that went into the plan was the federal government and the state, they create what they call emergency support functions. And there is basically fourteen different federal emergency support functions. An emergency support function is, one of those, an example of those is like law enforcement or public safety, another one being fire and rescue, another one being emergency management. And they create these emergency support functions so that when we request assistance, we can speak to a given function that we need help with. So the biggest thing that occurred in this plan was to make sure that our functions matched up with what the federal government and what the state refers to them as. The, the biggest thing you see is sometimes they'll change the titles of those functions, but that was the, the biggest thing that occurred was renaming our functions in the plan to match up with what the state and federal governments wanted to see. The other major piece we worked on too was we pretty much rewrote the portion of the plan that covers our shelter operations, based on some things we learned in our most recent event with Hurricane Irene. The biggest issue we ran into there was we had never had an emergency that occurred that required us to open a shelter when the schools weren't already operating. So we identified some things there that we adjusted within that section of the plan to make it go a little bit smoother than what it did this, this last time. The biggest issue there was if school's not in session, you don't have a cafeteria to stock with, stock with food. So we have learned from that and have adjusted that to, to make sure that if we have another emergency that occurs when school is not in session, that we'll be better prepared to, to address that.
Can I ask you a question about that? If, if, who pays for the food if it has to be stocked? Is that a FEMA reimbursement?
Yeah, that, that can be reimbursed through, through FEMA. Also, the Red Cross helps out with, with that function. We also learned during this event through some meetings that Mrs. Fleming had with some of her Western Tidewater jail counterparts, that we've got, if we got in a bind early on, we could get food service from the jail to help us out, until we could get other provisions taken care of through either the American Red Cross or just food that we buy locally or possibly help from the Salvation Army.
But subject to reimbursement?
Yes, sir. The, the little bit of food cost that we incurred for this last event, Hurricane Irene, that, that cost was one of the reimbursed items that was submitted to, to FEMA, so.
Mayor, while you're on the subject, Vince and I discovered that there was almost a total lack of clarity around who was responsible for what. And when you don't review these things, as he's doing now, you rely on memory, which isn't very good, because you're dealing with an emergency and you tend to forget how you've done it. So he really worked hard to improve this section as to who was responsible. When we identify that, then it's responsible to make sure they stay prepared, which he will do. But that was just not a good carryover from previous years.
Good lesson learned.
And it was a very, it was a very good concerted effort between social services, the school system, American Red Cross, and I basically just scheduled a meeting and what they had pretty much done all the work and put together. I think we've really got a good plan in place now to address the, the minor issues that we pretty much occurred during Hurricane Irene, but it's gonna be a stronger sheltering plan going into future emergencies. But that, those are the key, key changes. We need to understand that basically we are required to have an emergency operations plan in place. This plan affects some of the funding that we can receive from not only the federal government, but also the, the state government. If we don't have this plan in place, then it could impact, you know, future reimbursements from other disasters. So it is very important that we continue this plan. Like I said, it's nothing new. It's, it's been in place in the city for several years, but we reach that magical point every so often that as a council, y'all need to readopt it and, and, and make it available for us, for us to use. For the most part, during an emergency, the, the majority of the departments out there is business as usual for them. They do the things that they do during normal, normal activities. We just typically are working on their little, little, little different tempo, a little different sense of urgency, and because of the magnitude of calls that might be coming into any given department, whether it be public works, power and light, fire rescue, the police department, we have to maybe prioritize a little bit more than we have to because of the volume of calls. But for the most part, we all are doing our jobs out there. The purpose of the plan, though, is there are some people that change hats, and that's why we try to make sure that those people know that they have to change hats. Like Ms. Fleming, for example, she leaves being the city manager and becomes the director of emergency services. So, you know, it's just documented to make sure that everybody knows that once that emergency is a clear, not only do you have your normal hat you wear, you can also put this hat on and, and, and these are the qualities that you will take on as a part of the emergency declaration and, and the emergency operation. But stand for you tonight, asking you to readopt our emergency operations plan.
I'd like to add two things to the presentation, which has been very thorough that Chief's given. One is, as we went through this last Irene experience, we had a sort of a debriefing to see where we could have done some things better, where we could have cooperated better. And I, I would really like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the school district. We had some gaps. No one's fault, just some things did not work well. But they met with us in an extremely cooperative way, went through those issues with us. And there's no one here tonight from the school district, but they worked with social services and other agencies, did a magnificent job, plugged those holes, worked with Vince and his staff, and came up with their own plan, which we have integrated into ours, and that had never happened before. So I really wanna thank the school district and Vince and our city staff, the way they closed that gap, and the little gap that we did have, I am sure will, will not hap- happen again.
Excellent.
Vince knows I got really irritated about it, so did anybody else that was around me, but we got it, really got it clear and it worked well. The second and last thing I wanna say is, Vince has mentioned that one of the critical pieces is that we document everything. It's tedious, it's difficult when you're trying to deal with a crisis to fill out paperwork. It's just the last thing you wanna do. You wanna get out there and move the trees and clear the streets, get the power back on. But I would have to tell you, this staff did such a commendable job of documentation that the person with FEMA who was in charge made a personal visit down and said to me that this was the best managed and documented emergency that he has ever experienced. And I can tell you tonight that within sixty days minus or plus a little bit, we have completed every documentation. Finance has done a magnificent job of coordinating it, getting all the documentation together. Every department that she requested information from, they had it before she even got there to get it from them. She's double-checked it. We have sent in reimbursement for every penny that we could identify, and FEMA notified me today that it has all been received and accepted, and that we have done an exceptional and outstanding job. So I know that piece will serve us well, as we use it in the plan too. So be assured now, we've done it all, we just have to wait for reimbursement to come.
Good job. Thank you. Any questions of Chief Holt? I have a motion to, I'm sorry.
Is there any deadline that we need to get this adopted? End of the year?
They would like it by the, by the end of the, end of the year. We've got another plan coming before y'all next, and I guess the first meeting in December, which is the hazard mitigation plan. That's another one that is up for readoption and has come back from FEMA being approved. And that plan is, has to re, readopt it every five years, so. But it, I, you know, offer to any of the council members, if you've got any, you know, this is a, this is a living document. It's not, it's not a document that, all your emergency plans are basically, they're brought before you to make you aware that they exist. It's, it's nothing that's set in stone. They're, they're constantly being reviewed and revised, at least annually and sometimes more frequently, based on positions changing and all that. And I personally invite any of you that would like to sit down and, you know, go through the plan, come by my office and be glad to do so.
I'm not, I have not been able to access it and read it. Tell me, did you do the highlights? Did you, the changes or additions in the plan? Were they in red or bold or something so that we would know what was new?
We didn't. I can, I can pretty much go back and show, show you where the changes and some of the deletions were, but as far as the document that was sent to you is, is the document that was basically sent to the state for their, for their approval. But I, I did keep a separate, we, we've got the, the current plan that we're operating on, and also I've got the, when I pulled something out of the plan, I saved it in a separate folder, so you can see anything that was actually pulled out. Because there was some things that were outdated, like the Homeland Security System that we used to use with the color-coded statuses and all that's no longer, they used to be in our, it's in our current plan, but it's pulled out of this plan that y'all are looking to adopt because it no longer, no longer applies. But any of the stuff that I pulled out, I've made sure I kept it in another folder, just for historical reference.
I was, I have read this plan completely. This is it. I can tell you that if it had major changes, we would have been required and obligated to have a work session with you to go over those major changes. There are no major changes in here. There are some amendments and adjustments that Chief's mentioned to you and I have, but this is no major revision like you do of comprehensive plan. This is merely-
Has the state approved the plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution in, in adopting the emergency operations plan?
Some of-
Motion is your second?
Sir.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Aye.
And aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda is the legal interpretation of the newly submitted proposed charter changes. And, um, any presentation, Mr. Williams?
Let me catch my breath here. Ready, set, go. I have prepared a memorandum, once again, that addresses what I have summarized as eight proposals for charter changes that came before council on November the fourteenth. They are set out on the first page of the memorandum. I'm not gonna take the time to go through the, the eight, but my memo sort of follows the same outline as these eight summaries. The first one is term limits. The city charter provides that councilmen are elected to serve four-year terms and the mayor is elected to serve two-year terms. I don't find anything in the state code that limits the number of terms a councilman or a mayor can serve at the local level of government. By analogy, there aren't any term limits on members of the general- By analogy, there aren't any term limits on members of the general assembly, whether you're speaking of the House or the Senate. There is a term limit on the governor. The governor is not allowed to succeed himself. I would point out that our city charter provides that our school board members are appointed to a maximum of three, three-year terms, so in essence, that is term limitation. There are several issues that I thought of as I reviewed these, this particular proposal. There are two acts of proposals. They are close to one another, and I think there may have been a typo or misunderstanding. But it seems that there's a desire to limit the consecutive terms for the mayor to five, which would be a total of 10 years, and to limit the consecutive terms to members of council to three terms, which would be 12 years. At one point, it talked about 16 years, but then described it as 12 years, and so I was a little bit confused by that. But I think the intent was both suggestions to be 10 years for the mayor and 12 years for the council members. One thing that was not addressed by any of these suggestions and would have to be considered by council in formulating some legislation on this was that there is nothing that would prohibit someone who has been mayor for 10 years from then turning around and running for a council seat for 12 years, vice versa. There's nothing that prohibits a council member who's served 12 years from turning around and running for mayor and serving an additional 10 years. So the question becomes, if the idea for term limits is to limit a person from serving a particular period of time, you need to address that. Otherwise, you could see someone serve for a total of 22 years, 10 years as mayor and 12 years as a council member. I don't know if that was a concern of the people that suggested the proposed amendment, but it's something that I thought of. The second thing that is an issue is whether or not these proposals would be retroactive. At this particular time, you have three members of council that have already exceeded these proposals. The mayor has already served more than 10 years as mayor, and you have Ms. Hilliard and Ms. Johnson that have both served more than 12 years on city council. I don't believe it was intended to be retroactive because it did not say that it was intended to be retroactive. By the same token, I have some concerns as to whether or not you could actually make it retroactive. I think probably you cannot make it retroactive, but it's an issue that would have to be fleshed out before you could make a decision about that. The other issue that I came up with is there's a suggestion that once a, using the mayor as the example, once the mayor might have served 10 years, then he would have to come off and not be allowed to serve for two terms, which would be four years, and the council member wouldn't be able to serve for four years. My suggestion is that you're not able to control the number of years by which a person could, would have to come off from council. You might be able to control the number of consecutive terms a person could serve, but once a person comes off, whether by defeat or by the limitation, I think the person would be entitled to run for political office the next time the office came up for election, which would mean that a mayor, by way of example, would only have to sit out two years before running once again to fill the office of mayor. Obviously, because council positions are four years, a council person would have to sit out four years before he or she could run for council again. All right, the next suggested proposal deals with elected school board offices. It was a proposal that the amendment be made to the charter to call for elected school board officers. There's a Virginia statute that is directly on point, Virginia Code Section 22.1-57.2, and there's a copy of that code section somewhere in the back of all of this. What that code section says, that if you want to go to elected school board officers, you have a referendum process. And so you don't have to amend, it's not an either-or situation. To go to elected school board officers, you have to go by way of referendum. So I'll rephrase it in that manner. Now, the issues that you would come up with regarding term, excuse me, elected school board members is that it would be a four-year term. The suggestion was a two-year term, so council would have to consider the fact that if you're going to elect school board officers, you're going to elect them to a term for four years. It's a state statute. You would not have any limitations on the number of terms unless, well, you just wouldn't have that one way or the other because it's not a charter thing. You can't limit the number of terms they can serve outside the charter. So the referendum would be for four years as opposed to two years. You would lose the idea that you'd be able to control the number of terms a person could serve, and I think those were the big issues that I had. City council, city manager, city attorney relationships. You have five proposals there. I'm not going to go through those. They're at the bottom of page three and top of page four. Looking at the proposals, the first proposal is already considered in Charter Section 4.02 and Charter Section 6.02, so I'm not sure that you need to address that any more than you already have in the charter. The second proposal deals with a supermajority, hiring the city attorney or the city manager through a supermajority or unanimous vote. There's nothing that prohibits you from doing that. It might make the selection process a little more difficult. I don't know what was considered to be a supermajority. There are different definitions for supermajority. Right now, you hire a city manager or hire a city attorney on a vote of four out of seven. That by percentage is a majority. If you define supermajority as five out of seven, that would be 71%. A lot of times, supermajority is considered to be anything over 66%. If you had six out of seven votes, that would be 85%. Sometimes a supermajority is considered to be anything over 75%. So, you know, your options are to stay at four out of seven, five out of seven, or six out of seven, or unanimous, and that, once again, is something that council would just have to discuss and decide what it might want to do. The third proposed limitation is already dealt with in the charter sections relating to the city manager. It's found in Charter Section 4.01 and Virginia Code Section 15.2-1542A for the city attorney. The fourth proposal, city manager will be responsible individually as well as collectively to the needs of any and all city council persons equally. The problem there is you create a burden, a potential burden, for the city manager. Because on any given day, the city manager's going to talk to a number of city council members. So if a city, one city manager says, "I want you..."
City council minister.
I'm sorry. If a city councilman, I'm glad you're listening. If a city councilman says...
If I could kill you.
If a city councilman says to the city manager, "I want you to turn left," another city council person tells the city manager, "I want you to turn right," and yet city council has voted and said, "We want you to go straight," how can the city manager attend to the desires of each of these people individually and collectively? So I submit that's a built-in conflict. You're going to have a hard time wrestling with that one, but I would suggest you already have your guidelines for relationships between city council and city manager, and this presents a conflict to the existing guidelines. The last one deals with the city attorney. Once again, that proposal is already covered by Virginia Code Section 15.2-1542A, so it would seem to be unnecessary. Next topic is additional forfeiture provisions. There are a number of forfeiture provisions, and most of these deal with what I'll call criminal liability and are already dealt with in other code sections. The described behaviors are harass or threaten. Well, that's simple assault, which is a criminal misdemeanor. False or unfounded accusations, that's slander. And liable, which is civil liability. Unethical practices or fiscal impropriety, that would be a violation of the Conflicts of Interest Act, Section 2.2-3103 and 2.2-3107. Both are criminal misdemeanors. Give or accept gifts or services to or from the city manager. I just didn't quite understand what that one meant. So the best I could come up with, once again, would be that the behavior would potentially be a violation of the Conflicts of Interest Act. Wrongdoing or misconduct, no definition of either term is suggested. I don't see that as a whole lot different than the language in 15.2-1400D. And then votes on matters involving personal occupation, once again, that's a violation of the Conflicts of Interest Act, 2.2-3103 and 2.2-3107. So, once again, if council wants to broaden the categories on which it would impose discipline, and if the discipline is desired to be forfeiture, the county, the council can go forward with those suggestions. Absent from two consecutive council meetings, we do not have any attendance requirements in our charter. I don't find any prohibition on this suggested amendment. I think there should be some considerations if council is going to go forward with these. The considerations would be really what constitutes a council meeting. Is a council meeting the meeting on the second and fourth Monday of each month? Or does it include such things as boards and commissions like SIPSA, the jail board, and HRPDC meetings? So for instance, if you missed several meetings with a board or commission, maybe a SIPSA meeting or a jail board meeting, would that constitute missing two consecutive council meetings? So just some consideration needs to be given to that point. Supermajority for charter amendments. I've already talked about votes of five out of seven, six out of seven are unanimous if the council wants to impose such a charter provision. I find no prohibition on it. It just would be a question of what numbers would allow you to go forward to consider a charter amendment. Council, excuse me, manager council form of government versus mayor council form of government. Our current charter in Section 1.03 says that we have the city manager plan. That goes all the way back to an order entered in Southampton County on March 28, 1922. The city manager's responsibilities are set forth in Chapter 4 of the charter. Responsibilities are supported by statute, Virginia Code Section 15.2-1540 and 1541, and by Code Section 15.2-1423. Reverend Johnson is the gentleman who brought forward this proposal. His proposal was based on a form of government that is in Richmond. I think he used the terminology manager council form of government. I couldn't really find that definition anywhere, so I don't know really what is entailed. I looked at 25 of the 39 city charters, and I did not find another charter that provided for anything other than city manager form of government. In other words, Richmond is the only charter I could find of the 25 I reviewed that provided a form of government other than the city manager form of government. Interestingly enough, I looked in the state code, and under county forms of government, there happened to be five different frameworks of county government. But there does not seem to be a similar listing for cities. And so, as I've indicated, most cities have adopted the city manager plan. Richmond's plan calls for, and I gave you copies of the charter from Richmond that deals with the relationship between the mayor and the council. Richmond elects its mayor to be, in essence, its city manager. The charter says that the mayor can select a chief operating officer. So in essence, the mayor is the city manager, and the mayor adopts the city manager also. So you have a hierarchy of mayor, city manager, and then the rest of the staff underneath the city manager. When you review Richmond's charter, the city manager or the chief administrative officer, the CAO, I think previously I said COO, but it's a CAO. The chief administrative officer's duties are very much like our city manager, except that you have this top layer of an elected mayor in control of the chief administrative officer. City council is formed very much like our city council with members elected by ward, and then they elect a president from their body. They elect a president to manage the meetings. And so you actually, in Richmond, you have a president of the council that runs the meetings, you have an elected mayor that runs the city, and the mayor hires a chief administrative officer as his subordinate or her subordinate to run the city. And so my suggestion to you is, before going to that form of government, you really need to put some study into that effort to decide whether or not it's appropriate for the city of Franklin. Submission of proposed charter changes one year in advance. I find no prohibition on a provision that requires charter amendments to be proposed at least one year in advance of an upcoming election. I do point out a caveat for you. If you require a one-year advance, we just had an election. So if a person wanted to make a city charter amendment now, because we just had state elections in November, the person would have to wait all the way around the clock, watch the clock tick on by, till you get to November 2012 to present a charter change in the legislature for 2013. So we're in 2011, you would be 2013 before you could submit a proposed charter change under this proposal. And the alternative, if you said, "Okay, I'm going one year from the election that occurs in May," because we have local elections in May of this year, then your problem is you go one year around the clock to that election, you go past that election, and you come to 2014. Because the election's in 2012, one year would be 2013. You don't get to the legislature until 2014. So can you do it? In my opinion, yes, you can. You need to understand the consequences of what you're doing. You are postponing for long periods of time a charter amendment at some point that might be necessary. My suggestion would be that you put in a cutoff date. If this is something that you want to do for purposes of being able to spend more time on reviewing the charter amendment, you select a time, like a cutoff date, say August the 1st or September 1st, something like that. That gives you four or five months to study the proposed charter change. So that's... Uh, so that's what I would suggest, uh, for your consideration. So that's my report on these proposed charter changes. Any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Pat, Mr. Williams? We've had one person who signed up to speak to this issue, Dr. Johnson?
Mayor Council, Vice Mayor Johnson, members of the council, city manager, city attorney. I would like to, uh, address several issues on the, uh, interpretation of the, um, submitted proposal charter changes. One that, uh, our city attorney pointed out was the mayor and the chief administrator, um, basically using the format that you have before you of, of the city of Richmond. The reason for that is, basically, and Richmond has been very successful with that, the reason for that is, um, for instance, many of you are in business. In order to establish a strong business, it takes at least five years or more to establish that business. In the past, uh, we've had three city managers, and the city managers have to come in and catch up, basically, or follow the lead of the last city manager. Basically, with a mayor formal government plus, uh, having the same city manager, say, for instance, we select the city manager now, having that same city manager become the chief administrator, and the mayor would basically, uh, the chief administrator would basically, um, report back to the mayor. In other words, the city manag-, the chief administrator would still be running the city, however, but reporting to the mayor. That is, and with that, basically, you would not miss various things, basically, that happens with city government.